I call to order the special city council meeting Thursday, December 19th, 2024 at 5:48 PM. Moving on to at this time, please silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions. Moving on on the agenda, number item one is the roll call.
Blessam.
Here.
Fuller. Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Ross.
Samuelson.
Here.
Item two, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three on the agenda, action items, 3.1 alcohol beverage license renewals. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Paul. Is there a second? Second by Mark. Is there any discussion?
I have some.
Michaela.
Um, I just want to put this out there for the council. I didn't put it on the agenda as part of the recommended action. Because they technically haven't gone into the renewal process yet, but Basecamp Indian Restaurant, which is in the old... Oh, can you not hear me?
April we can.
Oh, Basecamp Indian Restaurant, which is in the old, the strip mall over by the mall, applied for a license in 2024. They are experiencing issues getting a state license. So even though we licensed them in August, they have yet to sell any alcohol. They have told me that they're not sure if they even want to deal with a 2025 license because they spent $3,125 in 24 and haven't been able to redeem any revenue off of it. I believe it is up to the council on whether or not, since they haven't been able to use that license, if you would like to extend it into 2025 to give them the option of possibly getting a license with the state. And I was just gonna see if there was any discussion you wanted to have about that.
Mike.
Yeah, so did they, did they ask for that or would we be sort of?
No, I didn't even offer it as of yet. They emailed me. They were pretty upset in the email. There's, I mean, I've done as much as I can for them with the state. I, you know, I've helped try to work with them. I've offered for them to come up to City Hall. They haven't, but I didn't want to offer it if I didn't know how the council would take it, so.
To me, it's sort of difficult to, to even consider any type of action along those lines if, if we don't even know if they're intending that. You know, if they're, if they're, if they've decided, look, it's not going to work to sell alcohol, then it really is moot, so.
Well, I know that they have tried, or they've already sent their money into the state for their 2025 licenses. The problem is they're missing some paperwork. So there's a language barrier that is maybe them not understanding what Beth fully needs, and that's why I've offered for them to come up.
Okay, so it does sound like their intention is there. They do want to sell in 25.
They want to sell. They're just experiencing issues and they don't want to spend another $3,125 if.
I'll go with Mark. Go ahead.
I guess, I guess I would kind of agree with Alderman Blessam. I think, I think let's wait and see what happens with the state. I mean, if it turns out that they paid for 24 and didn't get anything for it, then maybe we have some consideration we could render for them, but I guess until, if they still, you know, if we, if we do something now and they still don't get squared away with the state, it isn't going to do them any good, so.
Well, once we hit 2025, they won't have a license here and the state will not issue a license without a city license. So once December 31st of 24 hits, they won't get a state license if they don't have a city one.
Got some timing issues.
Well, the state has been working or emailing probably at least monthly and trying to get them to get the paperwork. They had about seven things. I got them to get about three, but like I said, there, I think there's a language barrier and with them opening the restaurant, they maybe don't have the time to come down to City Hall. The last email was kind of wondering if I could come out there. I don't know how helpful that would be for, for my time and their time, so I just wanted to see what the council wanted to do. And if, if that's nothing, that's totally fine and I can let them know that they'd have to pay the $3,125 to get a city license. Otherwise, the state will probably send them their check back for 2025.
Paul, just, we talk about all the time being easy to do business in Minot, and if they haven't, if they've paid for this license and they really haven't put it into place and, and utilized it, I'll, if you're kind of looking for some direction and, and the rest of the council can speak up, I would be fine with extending their license into 2025 if there's been a language barrier, if there's been some, some bumps in the road on them starting their new business, I'd be fine with extending that. They haven't capitalized on that. To me, I think of it when you rent a movie on Amazon Prime, you got 24 hours to watch them, or 48 hours to watch the movie. Once you open it up, once you start it, we haven't started that. They haven't, they haven't put it into place. They haven't, you know, it's not like they were selling alcohol for a week and then they shut it down and then, then had to get kicked back, so they haven't even put this into place yet. So it would be of my mindset if we could, if, if they're willing, if they have the intention, if they come back and they can get things squared away with the state within a reasonable time. I don't know if we'd want to put a time limit on it as far as them, them getting their, their ducks in a row, but I want to make it easy to do business in here in Minot.
Mike.
So, and a question, Paul, you might be able to answer it, or those of you that have been here, is there, do we have any precedent? Do we have anybody who's ran into that before? Mark, do you remember anything? Because again, what I, what I don't want to have is that thing where someone comes back and says, well, shoot, I just had that in 2020 and, you know, that wasn't the council's answer. You know, not that we can't make the right one now, but I just want to make sure we're not running into anything that was obvious from the past.
Not, not, not to my memory, and, and Michaela would probably be the, the source for that.
I don't think I've had a situation in the, since I've been city clerk where it, it's been, where they've been unable to obtain a state license. I know that there's one hotel right now that's still working on getting their license with us, but it's more of an issue on where they're placing their items than for sale than, than any other kind of issue. So I think this is probably one of the first times it's maybe been asked for.
Harold.
Uh, one aspect I would add to that is we have been consistent. We do not prorate the amount. So it doesn't matter when in the year you apply for it, you pay the full $3,125. Have they applied for the 2025 license yet?
I've, I gave them their first email renewal notice and that's when they said that they're still having troubles with the state, even on their 2024 license.
Because I don't think we can consider giving them a license in 2025 if they haven't applied for it yet. So my recommendation would be is to encourage them to apply for 2025. If they want a request for the council to consider using what they paid for in 2024 to apply to their 2025 fees, we can put that on an agenda for council consideration, but until they apply for their 2025 license, I don't think we have anything to discuss or consider.
Good point.
Yep, and, and that was my, that was my point. I just want to make sure Michaela has that if she needs to communicate with the applicants, kind of where, where council sits or what needs to be done in order for us to consider something, then Michaela has that information to communicate, so.
Anything further on that? Kind of separate, but the same issue. Any further discussion on, on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Michaela, just while we're still on it, how, where are we sitting overall? How many do we have left after these ones?
I believe that will be around five. But that doesn't mean that, that would be five that haven't put anything in yet. There's, I would think maybe anywhere between 10 and 12 that are still in the approval process.
So again, just the mayor did this at a prior meeting. We've got one special meeting left to be on this list. Otherwise, you don't sell on New Year's, right? That's, that's where we're at, so, okay.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we have a motion in a second. Please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to action item 3.2, the appointment of a special city attorney, Seymour Jordan, Minnete Police Ward County Case Number 24-19088. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark? Discussion? Is there anything you want to?
No, these standardly will go through council when we have an incident that involves city staff. And so we'll, we'll bounce prosecution of that over to another prosecutorial, prosecutorial entity. We've done the same with the investigation. That's with Ward County right now. And so we contacted Seymour Jordan with Divide County and he said he would be willing to help us out with that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 3.3 on the agenda, the update discussion on the city of Minnete Police Department, external investigative report and online. Do you want to take the lead on this, Harold?
Yeah, let me take the lead. So I felt it important. Yvette has been doing this external investigation for the department and for the city at our request. I also requested her to be here this evening. I thought it'd be important for you to understand her background and her expertise in this field and because I'll be making some potential recommendations based off of this report here in the near future, potentially to the council and, and potential changes within the organization based off of this report that I'll likely be updating the council and the community on here in the near future. But I felt it was important that you have Yvette in front of you and that you understand her history and her background and the process that she went through in preparing this report on our behalf. And with that, I'll turn it over to Yvette to introduce herself.
Good evening. The city manager asked me to speak to you, introduce myself to the city council. And I'll give you a little bit of an idea about my background and experience. I'm not here to take questions about the specifics of the report. However, I did want to give you a little bit of information about my background. And I also wanted to apologize for not being there in person. We had a snowstorm in Minneapolis with delays in the traffic. I wanted to ensure that I was somewhere solid with internet access so that I could at least participate in this meeting virtually and I wasn't stuck on the side of the road or an airplane on a cell phone doing this, city council, attending this city council meeting. So, city of Minot retained me to conduct an investigation into some allegations concerning the police department. Although I am a lawyer, I am not, I was not retained to provide legal advice. I was retained to conduct an investigation. By way of background, I've been practicing law since 1989. I'm admitted into practice in Illinois, California, Minnesota, and Wisconsin. Since 1994, while, when I relocated to Illinois and worked for Safar Shaw, a nationally known employment, labor and employment firm. A significant portion of my practice has been directed at representing public employers in labor and employment matters, both those represented by unions as well as those that are not represented by unions. My practice has had a particular focus with respect to employment investigations, workplace counseling, and training. While I represent numerous local municipalities, particularly in the state of Illinois, I also conduct training with respect to investigations to the state of Illinois Department of Corrections, and I've also done so for the Cook County Sheriff's Department. That training varies on topics, including internal investigations, process and procedure, investigations and or handling fitness for duty for public safety officers and under the Americans with Disabilities Act, FMLA, training on supervisory authority and investigations and the like. I've been involved in numerous investigations concerning police and fire departments, including investigations of violations of policies and procedures, rules and regulations, and as well as situations that included concurrent criminal allegations. Those investigations have addressed employees at all ranks through the police chiefs and fire chiefs. I want to say that despite the fact that I have done a significant amount of investigation with respect to the police, I have the highest regard for the police profession. They respond to calls for service when no one else is there to respond. They have the trust of the public and, and that's why they are held to such a high standard. I believe that it is a profession that deserves the respect of the community and that has had quite a difficult time in the recent past, including its recovery from COVID and issues that have taken place throughout the country. Though the city, through the city manager, I was asked to investigate the issues regarding hostile work environment, inconsistent discipline, staff confidence and leadership, staff retention, morale, staff morale, staff concerns about retaliation by Chief Klug. And part of that investigation then also included issues in the dispatch center and your PSAP. It took many turns and had included many interviews, some more than what was originally anticipated. The investigation report contains recommendations that are on page 15 of the report. Thereafter, the ordinances and policies were reviewed. There were other documentation, significant numbers of documentation that were reviewed. And as well as, there are summaries of the substance of the conversations that I had as well as an associate from my firm had with individuals that wanted to speak with the investigators. And I should point out, I failed to mention that I am a partner with Clark Hill. It is an international law firm that is a full-service firm, which includes representation of public and private employers. I'd also like to point out that neither I nor Lydia has worked in, in North Dakota. While we worked on this investigation, we did not know anyone from the city of Minot outside of this investigation. While our experience with the city staff and personnel has been exemplary, they are unbelievably professional and accommodating and did not limit us in any way and accommodated us with any request and truly were really nice folks and I really appreciated the opportunity to work with. I am not going to address any individual situations, but overall with respect to the highlights, you know, I did not find that there was hostile work environment or inconsistent discipline. While there may have been disagreements in discipline, I did not find that it was inconsistent. There are staff confidence and leadership, staff retention and staff morale. There is a group of individuals who may not disagree with some of the decisions that have been made by the administration and Chief Klug with respect to promotion and discipline, but I did not uncover that people were leaving the department in significantly higher numbers than, than in previous years. I did not find a basis for retaliation, although I know that the city manager has put in place a process for overseeing all the disciplinary action moving forward after this investigation and participation in the vast, in this investigation in order to ensure that there's no retaliation that takes place as a result of participating in this investigation. There have been many people that specifically met with me, particularly on the police department, who wanted to tell me that they were happy with Chief Klug, that he has gone out of his way to make accommodations and address their issues. There is no denying that there is a group of individuals that are of current and foreign and former employees that are not happy with some of the decisions that have been made. But the recommendations in this report were made to identify best practices and provide suggestions to you moving forward to address those issues and concerns and for the city manager's consideration when he makes his recommendation to, on the city council, if any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, questions not digging into the investigation itself? Any questions for Yvette? Any questions? Harold?
Not necessarily a question, but maybe just a couple of things to add on here with regards to the, the timing of the report and where we're at. This is obviously, obviously something that is a high priority within our organization that has a major impact. It's had a lot of public interest in it and following with regards to it. I wanted to talk a little bit, just briefly, about some of North Dakota's open record laws and procedures and how that has reflected in perhaps some of the perception with regards to the report being released publicly and in its current format. So, the state of North Dakota, and this isn't meant as a critique of North Dakota laws, just a factual statement. North Dakota laws are very transparent when it comes to public records, which includes personnel records. Most states that I've been in, personnel records are considered confidential. They're exempt from open record laws. And, but in North Dakota, that is not the, the situation. So when, when we began this investigation and determined the need for an investigation, state law has a limitation of a 75-day period in which any records related to an ongoing investigation can be maintained as confidential, either until the investigation is completed or 75 days is expired, whichever comes first. So, we started that clock on August 26th when Alderman Fuller and Alderman Samuelson brought to my attention that there was some potential concerns. That's when that 75 days started. So we were under the, under the clock to get that going, which was a very tight timeframe to try and do an investigation of this scope. Yvette spoke about the issues with the dispatch and having to bring in a second person to help conduct interviews. Fortunately, there was a lot of participation from our police department and, and our dispatch to participate in this, a little bit more than we anticipated. So we did bring in those additional resources, but that didn't reset the clock or extend that clock of 75 days for us. So we were racing against that to try and get that done so that we didn't have documents coming out in piecemeal without this report kind of providing the foundation and the framework for the entirety. The second aspect that I will talk about here is based off of the investigation the city did with, in regards to my predecessor. One of the things that came out of that was that the city had a public records request for the attorney's notes associated with that investigation. Typically, in most states, and in fact, our city legal staff had the opinion that attorney notes were exempted from open record laws. And so when those were requested, there was an appeal process for that that ultimately went to the Attorney General's office. And the Attorney General ruled that those notes were open record and that he or she interpreted those as open record and not confidential and exempt from the open record laws. So because of that, as part of this process, when we started this process with Yvette, we informed her of that, that any of her notes would not. we informed her of that, that any of her notes would not be confidential as she would normally get it in other states and that she needed to proceed with preparing this report in a manner that all of her work material was to be open record. So the first 15, 16 pages of the report is the actual report. If you download the document, it's 116 pages. It includes a lot of non-verbatim notes from her interviews with people. Those were done basically out of response to the attorney general's opinion that attorney notes are open record. And so we aired on the side of transparency to do all that. In the process of doing that, those are, are literally what they are. They're notes from the interviews. They're not verbatim. They're not meant to be the highest grammatical quality in writing and those kinds of things. And so I know there's been some, some feedback with regards to the lack of quality of the report. That's because they're notes. They're not official, official report or documentation that's gone through the editing process for that. And so I just wanted to make the council and the public aware of some of that. I have consulted with our attorneys and we have a great deal of confidence in the quality of this report and how it was conducted and how it's been done and that we can make whatever decisions that we need to going forward. And I will be working on those. I am not prepared to make a recommendation to the council this evening. I am currently working with staff and attorneys to determine what that plan is going forward. And I anticipate on hopefully having those recommendations in place next month when we come back from the holidays and, and those kinds of things. So, but I thought, I felt it was important that you have the opportunity to get to know Yvette and her credentials and her qualifications and experience in this regard. My understanding is, is not only does she work for one of the top law firms in the country that do this, but she is also a trainer. She goes to conferences and she trains other investigators on how to do these types of reports. She specializes in police department investigations. And based off of the feedback that I have from our attorney representation that we have a degree of, a high degree of confidence in the, in the quality of this report. And I will be working on preparing my recommendations of changes and, and those kinds of things. And I will keep the council updated as we get to that point.
Thank you, Harold. Any further comments or questions? Lisa.
Thank you. And this probably is a question for Yvette, but did the participants know that their interviews would be made public?
I'll answer that question. That, because that question came up early and I sent an email out. I forget the date. I'd have to go look it up. But I basically communicated to all staff that we were beyond the point of confidentiality that with the state's open record laws, that we had no, no way of maintaining confidentiality with regards to that. And they could assume that their participation would be public knowledge at some point.
Anything else? Seeing none, Yvette, thank you for your time and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you as well.
Okay. Moving on to, well, just right before item four, I just want to wish, take a moment to wish my fellow council members a Merry Christmas. I know we'll, we'll be meeting after Christmas for one final special meeting, but Merry Christmas to you and thank you for serving. It's been a treat and I hope you, hope you all have time with your families and with Harold and staff, Michaela, and the rest of the city, city, the team here at the city of Minnetonka. I want to wish everybody a wonderful Merry Christmas and take some time to spend some quality time with your family over the Christmas holiday. So with that, moving on to adjournment, is there a motion? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.